Welcome.
Ready? Here you go.
Welcome, everybody. This meeting is now all in order. Members of the public may address the City Council on matters of jurisdiction of the city ways. Persons wishing to address council concerning an item on the agenda will be invited to address the concerning issue not on the agenda will be invited to address the council during the public comment portion of the meeting. When invited by the mayor to speak, please step up to the election, state your name and the senior residence and make your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. According to this year's invocation. Right, from the new little call, so invocation. I don't think we have any vice on this invocation, uh, state of moment of prayer. After the moment prayer, we can stand up with the classroom, so hand out your heads for a minute. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity just coming here, Father, just group up and just ask for your wisdom, Father, your guidance during all these items that are facing the force today, Father, that you grant the wisdom that so red gift to everybody, Father, to the new council, stand on, Father, that any of you, uh, your will, Father, and you, uh, was special to people in the community, Father, and you for yourself, to your bike, shoot, and rest. And Jesus in prayer. Amen. Please rise, classroom.
Reading salute.
Thank you. One nation, under God, indivisible, the just as.
May we see it.
Or not.
Moving on to the road hall.
You have Mayor Serna.
Present.
Mayor Protim Flores and Councilmember Saros.
Present.
Councilmember Sanchez, here, Councilmember Villarreal.
Here.
All present.
Even can we have an approval for each agenda?
I can motion to do this end of a little fast.
On a second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Sarah, second from Mayor Serna, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Moving on to public comment, the public is invited to comment on any subject under jurisdiction of the city council. Please note that the speakers that wish to comment on a regular item or which they're carrying on to next agenda will have the opportunity to speak on the public comment for that item was requested by the mayor. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person with thirty minutes for the total comment period, unless otherwise indicated by the mayor. However, they also choose the submitted time. Before the meeting will be an email, public comments received in an email will be distributed to the council prior to the start of the meeting and incorporated through the official members. I will have to speak. They will not be read out loud. Under state law, matters presented under public comment cannot be acted upon by the council at this time. Moving on to item seven point one, election business.
Sorry, we do have to take the public comment.
Oh. I should help this right on. Hope we've enough this section for public comment during long vision may public comment.
There, hit the button.
Roxanne Serna, uh, district representative or Senator Melissa Toto. And I just wanted to say congratulations on the recent elections for our newly elected officials and the opportunity, um, to serve Lindsay in your role as a public elected official. Indeed, public service demands extraordinary dedication to community needs, reflecting a belief that elected positions are vital for fulfilling the aspirations of constituents. This role requires not only proactive engagement with the public's desire, but also a deep humility in recognizing the trust placed in leaders by voters, underscoring the importance of accountability and ethical governance in serving the greater good. In the months ahead, we look forward to collaborative relationship that further improves the lives and prosperity of Lindsay community families and also to the outgoing council members and who wear service the last four years. We really commend them. Thank you.
Thank you for the words. Anyone else wishing to make public comment to step forward?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Albrecht Lopez and I'm here today as the director of student services from Lindsay High School District, just to say how, um, how blessed I feel to live in the community of Lindsay. There, you know, for the small community that we are, there is a lot going on, and sometimes it's hard to choose what activities to engage in because there's so much going on. And I know lately, especially there's been a lot, um, we have, you know, you guys probably seen or heard our Lindsay High School football team has advanced to state champion.
Yeah.
That have stepped up to help by donating, um, whatever it may be that our players may need, but also towards the staff and to, um, everybody involved in making sure that this historic event really does remain historic and memorable for all of our learners and our participants. So, once again, just thank you for everything that you guys do every day to ensure the safety and well-being of our community and, um, just proud to be from Lindsay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, um, city manager calls and staff. My name is Connie Diaz and I am the newly elected College of the Sequoias trustee represented in Board Four, which includes the great city of Lindsay. I wanted to be here this evening to formally introduce myself to you as your new incoming COS member. But first, I want to join the community and thanking Mayor Serna and Councilmember Saros for their dedicated public service to the residents of Lindsay. I would also like to congratulate newly elected council members Joe Soria and Adriana Navek and re-elected council member Missy Villarreal. I'm a resident of Tulare and for another few days, a board member on the city school business. Next week, on the sixteenth, I will be sworn in as a new board trustee. I'm very proud of the faith and confidence that the voters of Lindsay and throughout the board have placed me to serve them on the college board. I campaigned on the theme of expanding opportunities for all. During my campaign, I shared with voters my vision of how we could work together to accomplish that. I am committed to helping COS students fulfill their higher education goals. I ran for this position with a commitment that I would be engaged, active and involve and involved for board trustee. I will have an open door policy and will work with anyone who shares my commitment to help these students. My goal is to visit with you throughout the year, to share with you updates on what COS is doing to increase opportunities, support and resources for students. I look forward to the opportunity to collaborate with your council and city residents to continue to support students and their education journeys at COS.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Good to be, uh, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to say, um, well, say congratulations to those that are here. You know, uh, thank you for the service. It's been best morale for Soria, um, Assemblywoman for District Twenty Seven, Lindsay native, uh, but co-resident now of the city of Fresno. But I did wanna, uh, come and express my congratulations to my brother Joe Soria, who, uh, will be officially sworn in today and also to the new members, uh, who will be joining the council and, uh, members that were re-elected. Um, while I don't represent, uh, this, uh, community that raised me, I do have a heart for the entire Central Valley and I know that the issues that I fight for every single day in Sacramento are not just for Assembly District Twenty Seven, but for family, uh, like my family that, uh, live and reside here in this community. And so, um, again, uh, congratulations to all those that were elected. I'm very proud of my brother. Looking forward to figuring out how my brother will represent this mother and how I can continue to advocate for issue control to care about this community. Um, again, congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Lemus and I am a learner represented from Lindsay High School for the city council. I came to update you today on some of our learning community accomplishments over the past couple of weeks. And I'll start with athletics. As Mrs. Cortez previously mentioned, um, our football team has advanced to the state championship and it will be this Friday. I believe in Florida high school. Um, on some exciting news, our administration is able to get four buses for learners to attend. So, we, they're almost completely all filled up. So, we will have many supporters this week on Friday. And as for soccer, we had them play, I believe, with El Camate and, uh, the sport four to one. So, congratulations to them. They are just starting their season and will get many more wins. On to clubs, our FPLA officer and a couple of members had a business score at the Warner Center where they learned a little bit about how our community center is helping our best, um, lending. And we had some business and finance faculty members compete in the SoCal Gashon Beach Company Challenge. And we will see that on the picture on the bottom right. Um, they placed very overall and saw many compliments on your presentation skills. So, that was, um, really glad for Mrs. Soria to have to, um, you know, that place in this competition. And we have the host organization preparing for regionals over the next couple of months and we hope that we give the best of them in their upcoming competition. To finalize this update, I want to share that our FPLA members and officers were volunteers at Christmas cheerleading this past Friday and will also be volunteering at the parade this Friday. Um, hopefully you can all attend and enjoy this wonderful conference. Thank you and we'll see you next.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Beth Soria, also a Lindsay native. I am hospital director for the local hospital district. Um, I just wanted to come up here and say thank you for those that served, um, the city of Lindsay. It has been great happening on the board. I'm super excited for the new, um, incoming candidates that will be representing us, especially for my brother Joe Soria. Um, I myself have been, uh, re-elected, so I will be sworn in next week. Um, I'm excited to continue working, um, as a director for the hospital board district and collaborating with the city of Lindsay with new initiatives and continuing with the work that we're doing so.
What a great night, isn't it? Uh, my name is Mercy Deppa from Lindsay. I just, and I'm here representing the Lindsay Chamber of Commerce. I want to say that it's a great feeling to collaborate with the city of Lindsay in the chamber in doing the tree dining, but also Taste of Lindsay. And we actually had, and there were two hundred and fifty participants that went through the chamber office, uh, last Friday with the passport. The whole idea was for them to walk around and actually, um, meet some of the business people that are here. And I just want to acknowledge it. And also we thank, uh, Peopleito and, uh, Southern for their participation in serving the last four years and bringing also the new people that are coming on. I'm excited about that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to make a public comment? Saying none of this portion exposed. All right, moving on to item seven. Cameras are returned and statement of the election results. And that will be sent by a.
So, this is the resolution to certify the election result. Um, on the screen, you have the totals. Um, the new council members, uh, or re-elected would be Nancy Villarreal, Adriana Navek and Joe Soria.
That goes to the new elected official.
Yeah, I just want to point out that Adriana, please, is actually.
Oh.
Thank you, Mercy. All right, moving on to other.
We do need action to approve this up revocation. We can't any public.
I'm ready to move to a piece of item seven.
Any others on it?
Search.
They want to get out of here.
Well, that's.
We're getting that.
Anybody wishing to make public comment? Um, beside of them, there's certainly more pros. Do we have a motion?
Uh, yeah, motion to the item seven.
I said.
We have a motion from Councilmember Saros, second from me, Serna, Mayor Protim Flores.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Villarreal.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to section or item seven point two, recognition for outgoing council members. Uh, this is black recognition as well, so.
I think, um, Mayor Protim Flores is gonna think that we don't.
All righty.
And here votes. And here votes, the lower voice.
Okay, this is going out here.
What's number?
Iboito Cerros began his term in the community of Lindsay, part of the mayor of City Council in twenty twenty. And Iboito Cerros was first appointed mayor pro tempum on January fifth, twenty twenty-two, and served the last capacity until his appointment as mayor on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And Iboito Cerros became the board's mayor in twenty twenty-three at the age of twenty-five. And during his tenure, as Mayor Proton and Mayor Iboito Cerros demonstrated unwavering dedication to the wellness of Lindsay residents, consistently prioritizing their needs and constituents, and contributing to various committees. And under Iboito Cerros' leadership, significant progress improvements were achieved, including multiple groundbreaking events and the completion of important street projects, and notably the Olive Bowl Project. And Iboito was not only, has not only served as council member, mayor, and mayor pro tempum, but has also been a passionate advocate, improvement squad system, and important figure to get involved in the local government. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the city of Lindsay hereby extends its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Iboito Cerros for his outstanding contributions to the city, formally recognizing and thanking him for the year to dedicate his service to the Lindsay community. And witness thereof, I hereby set my hand in close seal of the city of Lindsay to be fixed on this campaign of December, May twenty-fourth.
Um, thank you, Zed.
Maybe you can take it off.
You want to say it in words?
I hear you.
Yeah. Okay, so is it ready? Yeah. Okay, I have, uh, just a ten piece. Uh, what right? So, you know, the last four years have been so transformational. Not just for myself, but for our great city. And I know there's so much work to do, but together I think we've accomplished a lot to be proud of. From fixing a number of streets to keeping the river open, approving housing, investigating for our great infrastructure like our water infrastructure, building and supporting our public safety, opening our parks, you name it, I'm so proud of us. I want to begin by thanking the council. So, of course, Rosanna, I can't thank you enough for the support, the mentorship, the constructive criticism you have provided me throughout the last four years. Not only were you one of the people that I relied on for advice, um, fixing me for advice and ideas, but I really consider your firm's. You are a solid and straight-up person. The community is very grateful to have you as a half to carry on this council. Uh, you're one of the people who have told me straight up when I'm wrong, when I'm right, how to grow, and to always see each, each event in my life as an experience that's worthwhile. There are no words to express my little respect that I have for you. And thank you and please keep in touch, my friend. Yolanda, believe it or not, I'm gonna miss your eye rolls.
I am, yes, we can use that every time I speak.
Yeah, yeah. A very hard person to read, but nonetheless, you have helped me and shaped me to the person I am today. One thing that I take away from you is your skillful negotiation tactics and the betterment of our community. That's something that is, I think, just eye-opening. So, thank you for teaching me that. I'll miss you and I'll miss making me mad, but I wish you guys. Mural, I value and I learn a lot from you. I remember coming into this council shaking hands and saying, hey, Matt, Matt, let's talk about issues straight up. And I'm glad we did just that. You're a great public speaker and you represent the city of Mayor Solow. I wish you and your family the best. Uh, Missy, so bad, I wish we had the opportunity to work for even longer. Your approach to this council in such a short amount of time has left a pretty deep impact on me, like me. You're incredibly humble, I'm proud of you, and honest person. And when I see good people, I recognize them, and you're good for sure. And I can't wait for you to be next mayor in this, in this. Exactly. Can you ask what you think? And staff, honestly, you guys are the best. No, I'm gonna address all of them. Okay, you're the reason the city operates. And to every community member, don't, please don't forget to thank the staff here. They really are the ones that implement our vision. And for these three. So, thanks to every one of you guys helping shape me to the person I am today. Thank you for listening to my ideas, maybe not supporting all of them, but listening to them. And even if they were large or small, I came in after twenty-two, still in school at UC Davis, learning each day not just about city procedures, but how the dynamic of all of this can be. I, I thank you guys for trusting me for being Mayor Protemp and Mayor for one year, but, but anybody. I enjoyed every second of it and there's no regrets. I hope you all continue, continue to work together to push our, our city forward. Lastly, I have to have myself up a bit. I ran for City Council to bring a fresh perspective to our city government, to bring some enthusiasm, some excitement to this final word. To work, to be a representative that busy just put himself on a pedestal, but stands right next to them and maybe has to drink with them at home. I did that. I wanted to remain authentic, honest, direct, engaging, exciting, represent the upcoming generations of leaders, you name it. I'm proud to, of myself to say I did just that. I leave, I leave this council knowing that every idea that I do, every question that I ask, I did it for the people because you guys all deserve it. And it was an honor serving the community, each and every one of you guys. Thank you for the overwhelming support that I've received. I'll never forget it. And it was really you that took me there. And last, to my mom. Thanks to you. Who saw me coming home from these council meetings, sometimes happy, mad, angry. Mom, gracias. I wish each and every one of you guys the very best.
You can't. You can say something.
Oh, wait. Mom, oh, I like it, so, yosa. No, 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 please, please. Yeah, I'm a good face.
Okay. This is for our mayor. Ramiro Serna began his service in the community of Lindsay, California as a member of the City Council in twenty twenty. And Ramiro Serna served as vice mayor of the city of Lindsay from December twelfth to July ninth of twenty twenty-four before accepting the appointment of mayor. And during his tenure as Mayor Protemp and Mayor, Ramiro Serna demonstrated unwavering dedication to the wellness of Lindsay residents. Consistently prioritizing their needs, constituents, making and contributing to various committees. Under Iboito Serna's leadership, significant progress improvements were achieved, including multiple groundbreaking events and the completion of important street projects. And Ramiro Serna has not only served as council member, mayor, and mayor pro tempum, but has also been a patron and a caregiver of medical services and the community of Lindsay. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the city, and for the city of Lindsay hereby extends its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Ramiro Serna for his outstanding contributions to the city, formally recognizing and thanking him for his years of dedicated service to the Lindsay community. And witness thereof, I hereby set my hand in close seal of the city of Lindsay to be a fix on this day of December, twenty twenty-fourth.
Thank you for those kind words, um, the pictures, lights on. Thank you for those kind words, um, I got a tough speech to follow here. I don't have a headache, just, uh, jive it down with things quicker for the. Really did enjoy my time in the big work with all of this. Serving as mayor of Lindsay has been an incredible experience, uh, filled with gratitude for the opportunity to lead this wonderful community. Throughout my time in office, I've had the honor of meeting so many inspiring individuals, collaborating on projects that will leave a long-lasting impact on our city. The connections I've made and the work we've done together will always be a highlight of my life. As I transition into a new chapter of my journey, focused on continuing my education and personal growth, I do so with confidence in the future of Lindsay. I have great faith in the leadership of this council, our administration, and all of the others. I know they will continue to steer our city forward to even greater success. Though my role may be changing, my commitment to our community remains strong. And I look forward to seeing the positive strides that we will make in the years to come. Congratulations to the new council members. I'm excited to see the fresh perspective and energy they will bring to, to Lindsay. And I have no doubt that together, we will continue building a bright future for our city. Thank you, Lindsay, for allowing me to serve.
Good morning.
Any words for us?
Yeah, I, I, um, I want to thank you guys for your service. I respect what you guys do. It's not easy being a leader for our community. If it wasn't, nobody would be here today. So, I respect you. I thank you, um, for your service and I appreciate working with you so much. It's been amazing. So, um, good luck on anything you do.
I know both of you were very successful. You've been successful here, even though many times, Iboito, not succeed with some of the things, ideas I come forth with. But that doesn't mean that it's a bad thing. It means you're, you're a thinker and you want to progress. Maybe just not right now, but in the future, it will hold up. And I thank you for that. And Ramiro, you've done an awesome job as a mayor. I am totally astounded at how well you've done. And you've been here a pretty short time. And you've figured out the ins and outs, you brought it up, uh, the mental awareness that a lot of us maybe weren't as educated about, and you brought it forward to where everybody feels comfortable talking about now. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Definitely, yeah, I want to cry. Yeah, we're gonna be a conference. Um, so, I've been on the council for a long time.
Yeah.
With all the, everybody's great, everybody's different, and you all, you just. However, this council right here, we've bugged for a lot and a lot, uh, we've gotten mad, uh, we've been happy, we've gotten upset. But I think overall, we grew on each other. And I just want to, I want to thank you for, you know, even, you know, it's not easy to go on campaigns and, you know, get people to, to understand why you're, that's like the most important, right? So, uh, first, Iboito, um, I didn't think it was gonna be easy, but it was a little hard for you because you're dumb. And I felt like I was your mom sometimes. But overall, I do appreciate your motivation, your enthusiasm, your love for the city. You're a big advocate for the younger generation, well, you're the upcoming, I think you did a pretty good job, um, as becoming mayor, pro temp. Uh, I know sometimes you're a little, you know, a little alter, that makes people laugh. And it's not, you don't have to be serious all the time. But, and you talk, um, so, I just, I thank you, you know, for being my partner here. And I'm gonna miss you. Uh, Ramiro, um, we grew up together in Lindsay. We're a family. We went to school together. Um, it was an honor and a pleasure to be on the same council. Um, it, it was a joy to, uh, gain disagree to, you know, agree to disagree. We had our, you know, bad times, our good times. But overall, uh, we're here for the city and we get focused together and moving the city forward. And whatever you, whatever you're in journey is, I hope you, uh, take something and just be good much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you guys all for the kind words. Um, I don't know, do I owe, so, tell me, uh, the love. This is, this is new, new words, word.
Uh, actually, I don't see, I don't have, you know, I don't, do you guys have any word about it?
What's the public?
Oh, you're talking, yeah.
People, you do like to know, okay? Forward, this is it. All right. That's, all right. Thank you, guys. It's been a pleasure just working with, teaching everyone. We've learned a lot. And sometimes on the fly, sometimes our, our due diligence and the hard work, determination, the bottom of things. Overall, I was happy to be this council. Like, I think every one of them up here does a great job, like your speakers and your forward. And I, I don't see, uh, I actually see a soonest transition with, with the new council coming up. Um, I, I think we have a great foundation here, what you guys here, you guys are really doing some great things. Um, to all the employees, I, it takes all of you guys, uh, to run this, run this city and, and really don't pay attention to how much, uh, until we're in the events. Marshall, I don't know how you do it, but, um, these guys all over the place. They're like Ryan at the same, um, Rob, uh, Damon, guys are everywhere. And I, I just, I am honored to be a part of so, bigger than myself, maybe, thank, if I was keeping me honest and straight. The other thing, we thank you for always bringing everyone when you get questions and steering us in the right direction. I'm looking for good people, whatever. My boys in blue, over here, and, but, uh, thank you guys for the work. We find every day three pets and, uh, whatever we're dealing with, through our firefighters as well. We worked hard separately, which, I'm not here to cry today, but, um, if I keep going, I will, but, hey, I just want to say, man, and my, my heart goes out to each and every one of you guys for, for, on a day-to-day basis. And you guys will be pat on the back. Um, I'll leave you guys with that. Thank you, guys. For my family, you're. Good, pretty good, but, I can't, that, 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 by the way, we had a few questions. Thank you for always being gentleman in the spot. Again, we appreciate you. The office, uh, really appreciate you. Armando, who I was working with in two, uh, we did a lot of great projects together. It's, I'm moving with you for quite some time. Because of your ideas and stuff, besides, as you guys are writing, I think that's probably, continue to move forward and grow and, and. I love the, that you care for the son of those members. I'm a finance guy, neither one of us are finance guys, but you broke me down in a way that we can all understand. Thank you for that, that's all we ask. Just let us know what we're working, let us know what we're doing. And we really appreciate that, so. And can they get around the last one? Now, moving on to item seven point three, the moment we've all been waiting for. The oath of office for...
Yes, so I'm going to do them one at a time, and I'll call you up when it's your turn. So first up, we have... Great, you're writing now. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? And that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Do you so affirm?
Welcome aboard.
Next up, we have Beau Soria. Great, you're writing now. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic? And that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? And that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Do you so affirm?
Welcome aboard.
And finally, we have Nancy Valeria. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? And that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Do you so affirm? Thank you, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
We'll have a board recess at this time. And we can take pictures with the new council members or with our colleagues, so, and we have people, coffee, they all...
...
Mayor, Mayor, and Mayor Davidson. Nominate and appoint councilmembers to the positions of mayor and mayor. But I would like to request that Lindsey become our next mayor.
Sir.
What happened?
How do we want it? I think you.
Typically, you'll take all nominations and then they'll vote in order to nominate. And then once someone gets a majority, then they're in. So you'll ask if there's any other nominations, you can make them. If not, then we'll start voting.
Okay, can we have a second?
No, I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there some more nomination?
Any more nomination?
Okay.
Well, we would need a motion. So you did nominate, but now we need like a motion and he would second that.
Aye.
Anyone can do the motion.
My vote.
Yeah, okay. So Jose, Soria, second.
You, Joanna, Nave. We have a motion for Misty to be Mr. Villarreal for mayor from councilmember Soria, second from councilmember Nave. All in favor?
I always say aye myself.
Yeah, you can vote yourself. So now we need Mayor Prota.
The position?
I do accept. Thank you.
Okay, then well, we would do the same thing for Mayor Prota.
For who?
Yeah, and then Lamont. All of them.
I nominate Lamont for five seconds.
Are there any other nominations?
Flores. Okay, so.
Are you motioning?
Oh, I'm looking at her.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Also.
Who wants to take it?
I think it's Nave, okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Sanchez for Councilmember Flores to be Mayor Prota, second from Councilmember Nave. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We can reword this.
So people have, wait, play guitar. Okay.
I like that chair better.
Now you can have a chair.
Oh.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very good, ma'am. Thank you.
Have a training. We're relating to that.
Um, we're moving on to council right here. So seven point five. I can do that. And seven point five. This is the Council Point Support Board, D E C, Commissions, Actions, and Recommendations.
Yes, so we have a list, I believe it's imparted in your staff report. We need representatives and alternates for certain committees. The first committee would be the Integrated Regional Water Management. That one is the first Tuesday of every month at nine eight a.m.
We have to go in order.
I don't have to do it, but it's a little organized.
If you have one that you want to be on, you can just tell me as well.
I'll be able to do the TCAG.
As the representative or alternate?
I'll be the okay, I'll be the rep. And then also on the T C R T A, I can also do that one too.
Okay, any alternates for TCAG?
I'll be an alternate.
And then we would need an alternate for the T C R T A as well. The T P R T A meets the third Monday of every month at six, sometimes earlier in the day, and TCAG is the third Monday of every month at one. So so the alternate for T C R T A, sorry. What for Integrated Regional Water Management, anyone?
I'd love to do the Healthy Kids, Lindsay.
We have an alternate for Healthy Lindsay. That one, the mayor is automatically the fourth member.
Yeah.
So we would need an alternate.
I would be a volunteer.
Is there anyone that would like to be rep for Integrated Regional Water Management? Do we have an alternate?
I can be welcome. That's the first one, right?
Yes. We also have the East Clear Groundwater Sustainability Agency. They meet the third Monday of every month at one P M. You need a representative.
Is that the one that that helps like not around here, outside of here, is not here?
E T G S A.
It's the G S A.
Yeah.
Or maybe.
Yeah, I believe on I got the whole.
If I could see that's the one. See that. Water. Management. It can also serve on Yeah.
That's right.
Sanchez.
Or at least one.
Alternate, yeah. TCAG is automatically the mayor and the alter.
Is the alternate's name.
Oh.
And then we have the Lindsey Wellness Center Programming Committee. Okay, and there's just two representatives, so there wouldn't be an alternate. You would both be.
That's the last one.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think he would be making any financial decisions that would I don't.
Thank you.
Well, that's Did you still want to pick up?
Sure. Okay.
Flores.
Okay, then we have the Tulare County City Selection Committee. Mayor is automatically the board heard and alternate. Tulare County City Selection Committee. They need quarterly, not specific weekdays, or on an as needed basis. Then we have the Friday Night Market Operations Ad Hoc Oversight Committee, and they need on an as needed basis, and we would need two representatives.
I'll be on one.
Sanchez, we have a second representative?
I can.
Next, we have the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Special City Election Committee. They need an as needed basis as well, typically in the evenings. We would need a representative and alternate.
Oh. Fine, well, go ahead.
Just so councilors aware, councilmember, is this typically your first class?
Oh.
Yeah, you're the representative.
And I'll talk to them.
All right. Councilmember Soria, would you like to be the author?
That's the Samuel.
Yeah, just the Samuel. Ask me, I don't think they need super frequently.
They, you know.
Yeah.
Next is Tulare County Council of Cities, bi-monthly, a month, third Wednesday, a four, or a as needed basis. And I believe they need by cellular. We would need a representative.
I can do that.
Okay. And then a new committee on the list, you'll see, is the Lindsey Economic Development Committee. We don't have set schedule for that just yet. We'll probably start in January. We do need two councilmember representatives.
Thanks for the economic development. Yeah.
Oh, I can do that. It's got the focus on downtown, but it's for city.
Yeah, I can do that.
We have Naves, one of the representatives. We can second representative.
I can do it.
And then the City Water Ad Hoc Committee, I think that one was established for the two eighteen office, so it might not continue. We have to look at that still, but for representatives in the meantime, we need two of them. Sorry. Do we have a second representative?
No, I don't want it.
Yeah, so thanks for the
That was on it. So much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So just to recap what I have, for the Integrated Regional Water Management, Councilmember Soria as the representative, alternate Councilmember Sanchez. For the E K G S A, we have Councilmember Soria and the alternate as Councilmember Sanchez. For TCAG, we have the rep, Mayor Villarreal, and the alternate as Councilmember Nave. For the T C R T A, we have the representative, Mayor Villarreal, and the alternate, Councilmember Soria. For Lindsey Wellness Center Programming Committee, we have the representatives, Councilmember Soria and Mayor Proton Flores. For Healthy Kids, Healthy Lindsey, the rep is Councilmember Villarreal, and alternate is Councilmember Sanchez. Tulare County City Selection Committee is Mayor Villarreal, the alternate Mayor Proton Flores. Friday Night Market Operations Ad Hoc Oversight Committee, we have representatives, Mayor Sanchez, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sanchez, and Councilmember Nave. For the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District Special Selection Committee, the representative, we have Councilmember Nave, and the alternate is Councilmember Soria. For Tulare County Council of Cities, we have the representative, Councilmember Nave, and the alternate Mayor Proton Flores. For the Lindsey Economic Development Committee, we have the representatives, Councilmember Nave and Councilmember Sanchez. And for the City Water Ad Hoc Committee, we have Councilmember Soria and Councilmember Sanchez. Oh, that sounds correct.
Yeah.
I believe we just need some of those on that, so. We don't have to.
So now we may be down to council votes, we don't know, heavens, I'm sorry. Is that with me?
They may not have anything to
Yeah.
But it can be things intended. Updates.
Something you want to say, if you were taking it, if you're going on this call. I want to congratulate the alternative ed soccer team, who, sorry, I'm sorry for the who won their league championship today. Oh my God, I'm so proud of them. These are amazing winners. And I will be traveling to the state football game this week, so I'm so sad that I missed it. But I got, I got my, you know, for this, we're going to represent me, so that's it for now. I don't know, I might think of something else here. Thank you. Thank you. Love my joys.
The tree lighting was amazing, and thank you, Virginia. I mean, especially down the long side, our city, city people, oh my God. It just turned out so great. I was kind of glad it was different from the year before, but it was really good. Thank you. Thank you. If you see.
First, I'd like to thank the staff for last Friday night. It was wonderful. I was meeting on ten. Something I saw on Facebook, there was great pictures, that businesses and organizations that participated, and that it was a great time. I attended the football game in Chatsworth last Friday, and it was a dog fight, I said, and I lost, which I was down. The game on Friday in Torretin. On Saturday, I was able to attend the Lindsey Hospital View, I believe our friends are
I was.
Yeah, so she did, she did. I'm so, we were there. It was a good time, and they fundraised to give out scholarships to individuals, students, learners that are interested in pursuing a career in the medical field. And so it's always great to support that cause. A woman event, but here and there, there's, there's another yeah. It was great, great entertainment. So yeah, it was that, and then on Saturday, there will also be the pancake breakfast happening. The key club at Ray Through Church, so I will be there. I invite everybody to the canal, have some pancakes, and camaraderie. I think it was on ten, so. There's also an event tomorrow, I believe, our next four, I'm going to try to send a pancake. The historic. Let's forget the name of the organization. When we're having a song, that's where they have some music. The museum, yes. And I was like, okay. Yeah, so when it started, yeah.
This is the first day.
I was looking forward to seeing. So doing that and going out. I really appreciate the staff. I had to, for the maybe usually that's Friday. First coffee that's great as well, and that's chat base, so I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness and the conversations that we've had. It's given me a lot of hope for the future, and I just wanted to share something that that I'm sure we'll picture it with the budget, but the staff is pulling it away in more ways than I should, and I just wanted to, I really do appreciate that. I'm a blue collar worker, so I really appreciate it was a problem beyond to deliver all this public service. And so thank you, Davis, to show, to us this out, that's a lot of time you and your turn, I heard, to be rest. I really do appreciate this. So thank you for the service. Thank you so much. I've talked about how I'm servicing for your aim. I have great things about you as well, taking care of ourselves, to yourself, and you, so I really appreciate the entire staff effort. And really participate in that beauty. Representing us, really making us feel better than, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't attend, but it's simply so awesome to be just going downtown and as soon as I get off of work, I'm like coming down to town, to have a and it's so beautiful, it's so amazing. I love seeing people take their pictures in front of the little things that we have in the front, that's always awesome. Also, Virginia, her crew, the community staff has done an amazing job. The cleanup, I know there's a lot of these, I see them out there cleaning. And it's just amazing for everybody to get together, our town looks so I want to say congratulations to I want to say congratulations to the new council members. Congratulations Misty. I'm pretty sure that you did an awesome job as a mayor. You can, and that's basically it. It's super cold outside. It gets super foggy. Use dry fake, B fake, and same word.
Thank you, guys. I thought we haven't met since. Waiting for Thanksgiving now, so we're here at Great Thanksgiving. I attended the Christmas party for like 20 minutes on my lunch, which was amazing. I wanted the staff that put it together. It was super awesome. The food was delicious. I did the Christmas tree lighting, which was awesome. Virginia, amazing job. The taste of downtown was amazing. I couldn't have bought dinner. It was there. Adriana stole my joy, but um, our soccer team went to the championship today, Exeter, and they beat, was it a row seed? They beat the first game and then in the championship, they played Citrus and we beat them. So I was super proud of that. That was our first championship ever in all 10. So it's such a good feeling. But I also wanted to attended a playoff game in the Valley Championship Game for the Lindsay High School. Let me just tell you the, it was so amazing to see the pride that Lindsay had there. Like that place was filled with all of the alumni. It was such a good feeling. I would sit there like a little kid in a candy store, like, it was so awesome. Like, everybody was there. We wanted to be there and we want. And I can't wait for what they do this weekend on Friday. I just want to go so bad, so bad. But the Lindsay pride is super real and So we are moving on to staff updates and city services.
Hello, Council. So I will try to be free. As lead council tonight, my name is Brad Backeros in Elmwood. Wind Machine is downlit up. So we're in partnership with the OBF Foundation. They made a donation of $2,500 and got spotlights on kind of the mid-tier and at the top, color-changing lights that we change throughout the season. So tonight's kind of a crowd run. The lights got installed today at about 4 o'clock, so we're going to kind of fine tune that. But there's already a video that's going around of the green and the red alternating with that. So if you want to run by me, give it to that. We are working with Mid Valley for the Organic Place Program. FBE 1383, City has to provide organic compost rather than, or organic compost products for residents. We did an order for 190 tons of organic compost and the first delivery arrived today. Deliveries were being made at the Triangle Parking Lot, it's where the intersection of Elmwood and Alameda, it's across from City Park. Compost is free and available for the public on a self-serve basis. We're going to do a post today, both English and Spanish, on Facebook to announce this. And basically you can go load up your compost and use it at your residence. It's at Elmwood and Alameda, so it's right across from, from City Park as it gets that. Some of the council members hit on it. Marshall and his guys did an amazing job of trying to clean up at the storm that kind of threw leaves everywhere. They've been doing a great job on all the government and kind of intermixed with this. We've been trying to do a cat park cleanup. So we had a 20-yard bin that we delivered to Cat Park about three weeks ago. His crew went out there in the first couple of days. They filled it and had to have it come and picked up. They ordered an even bigger bin and they've been working on trimming a lot of trees on the south end of Cat Park as it kind of meets up with the Olive Bowl construction. They also trimmed a lot of trees that are right on the line at Olive Bowl. So you're going to see over the next couple of weeks and months that they're going to, you know, continue to work on that part. And I think you'll see a lot of change on that. Last thing that I have is the Promesa and Westwood Roundabout. The construction there and all the landscaping work has been completed. And we anticipate bringing the organization to Council on the 1st of January.
Good evening, Council. It's the extreme of the big government finance. We completed the state audit. It is not public yet, but released December 19. We are still working with our external auditors on all of our 2324 audit. However, I'm excited to introduce my new finance, account for three, Nathan Barber. All of our finance are not payable as we're starting and he's been helping me clean up the GLs. And then he's also trying to help me migrate into our system tighter. So I'm super excited to introduce him. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to board. And next is Human Resources. Perfect. Thank you. Well, good safety.
Oh, good evening. As you know, we're getting ready for Saturday night parade that will be this Friday. We have a busy week coming up. Also tomorrow I will be, and I am super glad Adriana is not going to be there on Saturday night, probably more than her. Because she is also a big fan of that, with all the partners that are going to be there. And they know what to do, they were there last year. They pretty much steal a drill and run it for us, whereas they're bird cast. It should be a good turnout like it's been going on for over 20 years now. Anyway, I'm attending something at the convention center tomorrow, put on my DCH essay, the behavioral health grant, regarding the proposition one going forward with some of the stuff that's going on with all of us and some mental health issues that the state suffered or focused on off area. So I'll be attending that. Want to be some more about that as well when it comes to what we're doing. Harvey?
Right. We're talking about this one.
It starts at 8:30, I believe. Well, it actually starts at eight and then it's almost right. Oh, the, I'm sorry. The parade starts at six, but there'll be gathering and stuff before that. The parade starts at six. And also, those of you who don't know, it's actually starting from the south. The Lindsay Center is coming to the port. So they'll come around, right in front of City Hall, down the old campus.
Well, thank you, Recreation Services.
Good evening, Council and you members. Welcome aboard. To off of the lights on the windmill, they're permanent, so we're going to be utilizing those lights throughout the whole year for different holidays, events, and whatnot. So we're excited about that. Coming up on the 18th of December, we have the river cutting of the skate park or the reopened skate park. At 5:30, we have the Chamber coming out to do ribbon cutting. Matt from the skating shop will be out there with a couple of chairs. Once we cut it open, they're going to be doing everything. So we're excited about that. To off of last week, we had an amazing Friday night, tree lighting, case of Lindsay. I'm happy that Virginia took the lead on that downtown event. Everybody loved it. Only positive feedback from that, so we're hoping next year we'll continue with that. The businesses love the idea. We got people downtown, Virginia being a good mixer, serving her food. They missed out. Amazing. Parade will be at six this Friday, so don't forget. Saturday night, it's 6:30. And then this Saturday, Rotary reunion pancake at 8:30, I believe. So there's a lot happening in Lindsay. I'm going to quote Virginia on the other night at the Chamber meeting, that it seems like everybody is helping everybody's community. City's helping the service clubs. Service clubs is helping the community, community is helping the city. So it's nice to see that happening in this small community. But this benefits everyone in the community and we just hope to do more in the small town. So I know it's hard to make it to every single event. We do understand everybody has their own life, so don't be obligated to attend an event and miss your downtime. But we'd love to see you guys there. So I'll go with that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of Council. You're the first one to say that. I'm not going to report on the evening night. This has been a crazy several weeks, but I did want to highlight three events. So Johan and I were honored to assist on Sunday, November 24th, Lindsay's fifth annual drive through church giveaway, which was a tremendous success. That was my first one of those events. And I, I was shocked at what I saw. And it's only because of the generous support of our local businesses, service clubs, movie members, that we were able to do what we did. And that was, we served over 300 turkeys. There were people that started lining up at 5:30 a.m. And that's football industry. And it's just, it warmed my heart to be able to see the human come together and participate in such a worthwhile event. We had the first Friday talk and talk this past Friday, with everything going on this month, the turnout wasn't as good as what we had anticipated, but we still had some great conversation. And I encourage you to try to attend those if your schedules will allow. And then this past Friday night, we had the pleasure of attending the Christmas tree lighting. And the event was just absolutely, I was telling Mayor Proton Flores that I, I actually got a little bit of emotional as I watched the event. I, I was just blown away. I had heard about the Christmas tree lighting, but to be able to be there and experience it, to see the energy, the controlled diversity that was represented, it was just absolutely amazing. And I, I am confident that it would be hard for us to find a similar event anywhere in the Valley or even beyond. And I'm sure proud of our staff that there's a lot of planning and coordination for the community members, business owners, city clubs, to make that event happen. It was a long day. We started the talk at 7:00 p.m. that morning, year before 7:00. We set up and some of the staff were here that night until it was after 8:30. And there was no complaints. Everybody worked together. We stayed late to make sure things were coming down already. I really appreciate the staff's effort for that. And more events this weekend. Looking forward to attending Santa night when we have the La Cuzada on Saturday. I plan on attending, so it's just a busy time of year. And we look forward to knowing one great difference between when I hopefully move on.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent counters. The voting items approved in one motion unless invited for discussion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made. In which event, the item will be removed through the consent counters to be exempt and voted upon by a separate motion. We have a rule for the calendar.
We have a motion from Councilmember Sanchez, it's taken from Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Nave?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Flores?
Aye.
And Mayor Villarreal?
Aye.
Motion carries back to there with the first thing I can't hear.
It's been a great night. This is my first time. I've seen a transition of all the council councils that I've had in experience and I've dealt with the city in the past over the years, which is good to see turnout. But I'll say congratulations to the new council members and those that have been in the name. My name is Thomas and we're value disposal. We tried to come out of here from a secure place. We're just kind of update the city on our compliance efforts with regulation as we're here, Ryan, as I was talking about earlier. So I'm going to run through a few things. I'll make it quick.
Just aim it at the laptop over here.
Got it. Fellow running over tonight is inside assessments, cycling laws. Education we've done in the city this year, some events that we've attended, a little power cycle, let's say. I usually have an operations area with me here that will go over, you know, for 10 to 40, I'm not going to fill that in fast, it's not only the best. So side assessments. Side assessments are when a civil coordinator of the business, an assessment of the service dimension. One, they're compliant with contamination and two to have service levels. As you can see, there's other things that we do, implementation, compliance, and we will come and make sure that, you know, refrigerators not boiling that aren't acceptable in that stream, as well as bulk drivers, which bridges other things. So in 2024, we conducted 145 commercial side segments, 21 multifamily and 100 maybe special protocol. So this is our compliance aspect of SB 333. And as your hardware, I'm going to take care of this compliance aspects for the city. Recycling laws. Our recycling laws where a driver sees contamination in a bin or a can and he physically gets out of the truck to read contamination tag with a generator note. There's been a problem. So this year, you guys actually did, it's actually really moved good. Residential tags only 33, commercial tags only 35, for a total of 68. It's a pretty low number. I mean, we have some cities where it's, you know, it happens. So that just means that the educational providers hopefully make an event and the city can continue on that, on that upper track. This is a type of education that we provide. SB 333 requires an annual education. We kind of go up rather than not. You're going to have to education, education, uh, sustainability and compliance. So on the left, we'll see SB 333 information. That is the one annual mail that is required by the state by the regulation. The other two things that we send out are our side guide, which is a stop bigger version of what goes where in the stream. And instructional service guide on the right. As you can see, there's a, there's a focus on correctly putting your, your waste in the correct stream. So we believe again that that education is a key goal and compliance efforts are going forward with the ever-changing laws of California recycling. We did some events this year in your city. We were at the National Rally Day. The chief out there, talking to Damon for a bit. We had a booth where we had kids that were, before they watched the movie, they were in the pool and I actually, I attended the event as well. It was a great turnout. And we really take an opportunity to really connect with the kids at these events because we believe that teaching the future generation will go a long, long way as far as sustainability. We also worked with every single elementary school, second grade class who's been affected this year. So that's only one feature of many, but we made an effort to get out to elementary schools again and make sure that education is being provided to our youth. So the future generations know exactly what it means to be sustainable. A little power cycle update. As you can see, if you're not familiar with 1383, it was adopted in 16, it really became enforceable. The regulation got adopted in 19. There are some benchmarks throughout the years that they want you to disposal by 2020. And then 75% you can see every area. And I will be honest with you, there's no jurisdiction that I do with that. I haven't known yet, but I hope this work goes and we try to fix that number. I will get to your diversion. But rest assured, we're trying to do our part to educate again, so those numbers to check that upward. This is another update. It says the same thing, just visually different. It's looking for my graph. So again, and open class reviews, we handle that from City Roundup and the discussion. We have a lot of the aspects that are needed for the city. And I actually have a power cycle meeting tomorrow with Mauricio, who is one of the newest members of that group in the city. So I will be out here to hand him what the power cycle funds are for, for the talent. And then that rep is here to help assist in any kind of shortcomings that you may see while we're out. So I'm going to transition over to you guys to think of an operational function. We did ten loads this year. A hundred and ninety-six vessels were pretty good for a fall event. I mean, I didn't even have to rent that gear. It was a very nice sound. And we also moved locations this year. I believe it used to be at one of the parks, but it's no longer. Yes, it was a good park, but it's not there. So it was good. We got education out to the public. They were able to attend. And this is another aspect of what we provide for the city. Does this use all of that waste that you would normally see, it's been dumped out in the country roads or on the farms or in back parking lots or alleys? This allows residents to not have to fill it. That's an option for them. You can completely do that. So. Quickly, you guys have a ton of mattresses, eight point five four tons, which is a lot of mattresses, which is good. And those mattresses can recycle. Do the non-hitcher cycle council. Every time you buy a mattress, you keep it small feet, keep that council going. And so that's a great, that's a great number. E weighs five hundred and ninety pounds. E weighs his computers, CRT screens, things like that. Total refuse tons nineteen point zero eight tons. So that's really good. That's nineteen, that's nineteen potential tons I didn't get to see before that I was able to make to do the, do the dump instead. Total green waste is six point nine seven pounds, or tons, sorry. And then total metal fifteen bucks. So total diversion rate is sixty percent, which is a really common number for a cleanup event. So the folks responding. And I think they enjoy the event. That's important. But we'll have another spring. We'll have another date that we'll see. And we'll make sure that we can never fire out just like that to residents, to make sure they're away. Lastly, here's your, your data detector for this period while it's all against. Commercially, you guys got rid of basically nineteen hundred and eighty tons. Recycle was a hundred and six tons and organic was eighty-four tons, which are total diversion of ninety percent. You typically see a lower diversion rate with businesses because they don't have a lot of work limits. If they have food waste, maybe, but most businesses don't have a lot of landscape. Some houses don't have a lot of food waste. So that diversion number tends to be anywhere from ninety to twelve. So that's not a bad number. Residentially, you have about twenty-six hundred and ten tons of trash, five hundred and twenty-one tons of styrene. Almost twelve hundred tons of organic waste, which is a big number, which means that the city is utilizing the services provided to them. And total diversion rate of forty percent is not a bad number. I know that we talked about seventy-five. But let me tell you, to be honest, no, we see no seventy-five. I would have ended using forty, forty-five percent, which is not out of, out of range of any other jurisdiction experience right now. So that's a good number. It's a good thing. With that, that's it. I'm here to take questions. So if you guys have it, sure. I have a question for the recycling laws, or to continue with the recycling laws. What are the most fine violation or that you're about to speak? And what comes, what, what is the solution for that? It's a great question. Styrofoam and plastic bags. Plastic bags that you get at Walmart, you would think are recyclable, plastic, but they're actually not. They're out, they're already made out of mixed recyclables or not recycled. That's a common misconception. And styrofoam is a common misconception as well. Those are the general things that the drivers tend to seek. When a side assessment is done or a recycling audit is done, a tag is done on that counter. A copy of that tag reaches my department, the recycling department. I'm a recycling coordinator that actually will mail out education and a letter that states, hey, this is what we found in your camp. This is actually a recycling bag. We show you where it needs to go. And we hope that that combats it. If it doesn't combat it, on a second offense, our recycling coordinators actually make a physical phone call to the account, to the, to the, to have on the tag, to get them to comply or give them to understand the process. A strong word, but to get them to understand what is needed from their business. On the third attempt, you make a physical visit. People talk to the manager or the owner and do this. Because maybe somebody got lost in transportation. Maybe the information actually never reached the person that they need to reach. On a fourth offense, we get the city involved, Joseph. I'm not sure if he's here tonight, but I deal with Joseph quite a bit. We haven't had a split at that point. I think in most instances, when we call, I just explain it to them because it's not like they're doing it in hours. So educating them, again, kind of a re-prank city or municipal presentation support. And so that's kind of where we go with that. And the second part, so kind of an incident for someone that mattresses, box, and cornered, that was straight from my home. I think it was the city, not sure if it was the city, but the city that I was curious, you mentioned a recycling fee or something before that too. So the recycling fee is actually when you purchase it. So when you buy a mattress, there's a fifty millimeter fee that goes to the mattress recycling castle. And they have to recycle those mattresses. They take all the fabric off, the spring on, and that way it doesn't make it to the landfill. So it's actually just a mattress that you're combining. For the mattresses that may have been abandoned in your city, I know that we work with public works a lot in the city. I'm not sure how those would pick up, to be honest with you, but we always can deliver a roll-off. We have guys that can pick that up. We actually have our Kiesberg yard, a mattress recycling council, which is regular. Exeter actually has one as well. I'm not sure if the city of Lindsay does have one. But if not, I can get you guys a copy of the mattress recycling council. We love to have a trailer with every jurisdiction possible. It's like four mattresses. So if that's something that you're into, or if you're looking into, you can definitely reach out to the Harris. I'll let you show it, but I don't mind.
What's the, what's the city yard?
Yeah, so we've had a, we have a bin, basically, that we can store those and then we transfer them later to the second set.
Here's my other question.
Yeah, and that's in quarter seventy-six or power here in Los Angeles, at the city.
Anything else in council? Okay, really appreciate it. We're going to try to make this more regular. I know it's going to loss some values in here, but one, this congratulations to the staff now before this is missing.
Thank you. Thank you. We have twelve point two for carrying out the new services.
So I think I'm not going to be meeting virtually, so we can go ahead and skip that. It's time.
So we'll go on to action items. Thirteen point two, returning from the board, maybe five to ten year budget of actual minimum permitted. Basically.
Guys, we'll leave all the boxes for a bit tonight because it's going to be a long presentation, I remember.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, as most of people are aware, the, our news, right? The city's been deficit spending with negative budgets adopted, and then we've also caused a negative amount by deficit spending those negative budgets. Our goal this year is going forward to stabilize that budget, stop the deficit spending and ensure it remains our holiday. In doing so, we are educating our staff on proper accounting practices, explaining the importance of the budget and how the plan expenditures to eliminate deficit spending. Tonight, we will review the budget, first with actuals as a whole by fund. The detailed report by each budget line was included in your package for review. The actuals include revenue as an expenditure posted through the end of November. Here's an overview of our current budget. As you can see, our twenty-three, twenty-four budget adoption was budgeted last year as a negative one million, seven hundred, ninety-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven. That means we were not only deficit spending, but we also adopted that negative budget. The budget that I inherited in May when I started for twenty-four, twenty-five was projected to be two million, six hundred, ten thousand, five hundred and eighty negative. In September, on September tenth, we did a budget revision and we were able to have a positive budget of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. Current with tonight's amendments and budget, we are projecting revenues of seven million, nine hundred, seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty. And our total expenditures of seven million, six hundred, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen, which now we are projecting a positive balance at the end of the year of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, forty-one dollars. Just remember, that's for current year budget. Still have all of those deficits from prior years of that one million, three hundred, fifty-five thousand negative that we're trying to eat away at. So with that one million, three hundred and fifty-five, we have a positive two hundred and ninety-one. We're going to still get a negative one million, but we're working away at that city and that negative budget. As discussed in our preview meetings, we are continuously reviewing and adjusting the budget. So I will continue to bring these to you. Tonight, you're going to be able to see our budget, what expenditures we spent through the end of November, and what percentage of the budget we're at.
Thank you. Now, this presentation, does it include some of the fluctuations in salary?
It includes everything that you have. Which piece? It has everything that we've discussed. Yes. It had all salaries, everything, the balances, accruals, everything. And we are working with our auditors to continue, and like I said, on Friday two, Friday two and everything, but everything known at the end of November is top of, yes.
Okay, but I just feel like we need a little bit of hard discussion on that because I don't like just hearing about it, just a few minutes ago.
The, which piece?
About the salary adjustment, the kitchen, holiday pay, everything.
Everything is accounted for in the budget that you are seeing tonight. And those are our balances that are on the books at the end of course. So everything's accounted for.
Yeah.
And that was prior year.
Yes. So, yeah. But this is the new council, and I think that it should be.
They should know, correct, who are not about this because I didn't know. So to give you guys more background, the budget has been adopted negative. There's been miscalculations in the past. In all the prior year audits, we have been deficit spending, and there's been miscalculations that we are having to rectify in front of you to fix those deficits. And lead balances, salary pay has been incorrect, but we have to fix the correct calculations going forward. So what we're doing is going forward to fix the past. So just to bring you guys along, everything's accounted for with what we're going to teach tonight. Because there's balance sheet accounts, there's revenues, and then there's expenditure accounts. And there was accruals that have been hitting our balance sheet accounts that we have to rectify because we've overstated some of those balances. But that's in accounting for in these numbers.
Yeah. You good?
Yeah. I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page before I proceed with the, but everything's been accounted for.
Okay.
And everyone understands that their in checks are going to look different. We're doing that in this next, okay, we're on. Yes, we're going to send out a letter that every case of it. Yes. So, um, I'm sorry, what's been, the words changed. It's the way that the calculations, because when you go pay and someone cashes out, you earn your time worked, overtime, comp time, as hours worked. When you convert it to the term and a half is when you're actually paying out. But there's been calculations where it's been converted to the one point five and then converted again to one, one point five when it was paid out. So it was compounded.
So that's what they found in the audit, right?
Correct.
Things were not being calculated right for us hourly if they came in. So now they're adjusting it.
Oh.
Because they were pretty much giving free time and, you know, money.
Correct. Calculations have been done and corrected in the past. So what we're doing is we're making that whole and going forward, we will calculate properly going forward.
Okay.
So we're keeping everything full for the employee, and we are just going to inform them the proper way moving forward. But everything's been accounted for in the month. Any other questions so far?
That was a formula, or there's a formula that you stretch of that of school.
It was staffing error, misunderstanding, and not understanding how to complete payroll properly.
So now there's a.
Yes, there's SOPs being put in place, putting together binders, which have standard operating procedures outlining the proper way to account. And we're going to educate each of our staff that's doing any requisitions for a hospital on what needs to be done to effectively do our jobs properly.
And for the records, it was before you take.
Correct.
She's fixing it out to.
This is everything.
Your prior.
Correct. So moving on to our budget's actuals, this is our normal general fund. The budget is the seven million, nine hundred, seventy-nine thousand that we discussed, with our expenditures set at seven point six, leaving that two hundred and ninety-one thousand. Currently, our revenues are, that have came in for current year is one million, four hundred, thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine, which is only seventeen, twenty-five, five percent of our revenues. We have taxes coming in in December, usually again in April and June, so no reason to panic at this point. Our actual expenditures is three million, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-one. So our expenditures are forty-three point two nine percent of the budget currently, well, we're in December. So with that being at the end of November, that's pretty on target. This is why you actually want to have an ending fund balance, because this was just the timing of our taxes. Because most of our funds do come from taxes. And with a negative budget, if you have a positive income balance, it kind of helps you flip those ones that you're not receiving revenue. So this is an area that we want to watch because our expenditures are outpaving our revenues. Our prior year deficit does carry forward, which means we are still addressing prior deficiencies, as we just discussed. And our current year is a balanced budget with a two hundred and ninety-one thousand to help offset those. We have a fortato grant. Our budget is three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty. Those are specific funds for a grant. So what you budget is your revenues and your expenditures to have a zero balance. Anything that's not used in current year, we will roll to the next year. At this time, we have not spent any of those funds. So at the end of the year, if we do not spend those funds, we are projected to carry back three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four into next year. Opioid funds are also a segregated account for opioid funds that works exactly like our product funds. We budget out what will be carried in. We have fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight. To date, we have only spent five thousand, thirteen dollars, leaving forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five, which will carry over to the next year. We'll spend them. Same thing with the best grant. Those are specific funds that are for the best camp or our public safety department. Our revenues and our expenditures are set at nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one. It is a match. So anything that we've seen there has to come from general fund, which was the original budget we talked about. And currently, we spent seven thousand, fourteen dollars in that account, two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven. If not used current year, we'll roll forward to next year. Moving on to street funds. Street funds, we have two hundred, which is our street improvement fund, which is our S I P that we've discussed in the past with water, sewer, and refuse. A portion going into that fund to maintain our streets. Our budget was nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-three. Our expenditures are set at one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty. And we are deficit spending in current year. However, we did have a fund balance going into this year. So deficit spending, when you have a plan in place and a fund balance, it's okay to deficit spend. Because those funds that we just talked about from last year moving into this year, same thing. We have funds to help cover, and we use planned expenditures for a plan for this year. So currently, we can only receive ten point eight one percent of our revenues. Same thing, timing with taxes and mid-valley contracts and transfers coming from water, sewer, and refuse funds. During our state audit, we were told not to do a monthly, and that will be a transfer at the end of the year with a set amount. Uh, during our state audit, we were told not to do a monthly, and that will be a transfer at the end of the year with a set amount outlined in the twenty-two twenty. Yeah, twenty twenty-two feasibility report, where we have a maximum allowed to transfer to the street improvement fund from those three funds. It will be done at the end of the year, and that amount has a nine point three inflator for twenty twenty-three, a nine point four inflator for twenty twenty-four, that will be added on top of that twenty-two feasibility. So you will add it by the cost of mix every year to figure out what the transfer map will be. And then we'll revisit that every five years, like we discussed during Prop two eight. So, um, we have a planned expenditures here. The beginning fund balance covers that um deficit spending and this fund is not deficit spending overall. Two sixty is our S U one road payments that we have. This uh budget is balanced, where we do have projects defined. They were defined in fund six hundred and a half. We are journaling um those expenditures into this fund, so that they are coming directly out of the fund. Because the fund six hundred has money to get waters and made it an unraveling of the projects. So we will be paying expenditure directly from the funding source identified for the project when we bring it to council. This uh year, we have budget set as the same as the income of three hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred forty-six. And we are not projecting to deficit spend. Currently, we've brought in a hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred seventy-seven, which is thirty-six point twelve. And we have not moved any of those expenditures into the account yet, so we've not spent any of that. However, when we get to fund six hundred, some of those will be moving over into this. Fund expenditures, so let me go back. So see where it says what budget three hundred twenty-four thousand? There was a fund six hundred that just every project was being thrown into six hundred. Well, two sixty funded six hundred, two hundred funded six hundred, all these different funds. They were just throwing it in there, and then you had to dissect to figure out where it's going. This way, everything that is being funded is directly from the funding source to clear the confusion. And everything is segregated and being funded worship from the start. So when we get to six hundred, you'll see expenditures within a budget. So those expenditures will be put in here through journal entry to where the actual funding should be. Does that make sense? Moving on to gas tax, which is also a street fund. We have our budget at three hundred forty-nine thousand in revenues. We've collected a hundred and thirty-one six oh one, which is thirty-seven point six three percent. Again, we need to receive our taxes, and they all come in on different of the years, so nothing to be alarmed about at this point. Our budget for expenditures, again, is four hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-one. Spent a hundred and fourteen one fifty-two, which is only twenty-six point seven one percent of the budget. We are deficit spending, but again, this fund has a fund balance that rolled from last year into this year. So it's nothing to be alarmed about, they are planned expenditures that we are currently utilizing those funds. Next one is fund two sixty-three transportation. Again, this one is budgeted at three hundred thirty thousand dollars incoming. We've received seventy-three thousand six hundred seventy-three, which is twenty-two percent of our uh revenues. And then our budget is set at five hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred eighty-six. We received seventy-four thou- or we've spent seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight, which is thirteen point five percent of our budget. We are deficit spending, but again, just like the other funds, we have rolling balance from prior year to help cover those deficits that we're spending in for under. Fund two sixty-five is our S T P highway funds. We are projected to bring in eight thousand five hundred thirty-four thousand. We've brought in seventy-seven five hundred thirty-four, which is ninety-six percent of what we're projected to bring in. Our budget for current year is six thousand. Of that, we've spent three hundred sixty thousand six hundred forty-nine, which is sixty percent of our budget. We are uh deficit spending again, however, this one is also one of the ones that we've been fully funds to be able to do these projects. And that fund balance is helping fund these deficits for the current year. The next one is our L T F streets and roads. These are our funds that are held up to T C A, and we have already received a hundred percent of our four hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-three allotment. From T C A, again, it looks like a huge deficit of one point eight million dollars. However, this one also carries a large fund balance that we receive funds annually from T C A. And we have projects in place, and we have a balance carrying forward to be able to fund those products. Our next one, our H C D fund, this is the we're trying to sell proceeds, fund three hundred, which we talked a lot about since May. I know there's a couple of uh new members on the council tonight, so I'll go into a little bit of history. McDermott sold, we have to reinvest those funds in the public community. And there are some uh projects that were identified to use those funds. We have until June of this year to utilize those funds, and we have to spend them all by that G date. So the five hundred sixty-three thousand seventy-eight is our funds rolling over and budgeted for current year. And we are attracted to spend all those funds financially.
You already have projects.
Yeah, yes, they were approved. So they are all in progress. One was a skate park, one was the people walk court. We have a couple of water projects. Uh, bar screen in conjunction with ARPA, bar screen, which Ryan will talk about a little bit later. Um. There was two more, there was some piping of water treatment.
There, so it's already been.
Yeah. Our funds that just have to be used by June.
Okay.
And they've already been identified, because before we can spend the money, we actually have to have council approve it. Make sure that H C D also approves it, and we have a deadline to suspend it. Next is our emergency funds. This one, I do want to go a little bit into detail. So this one is from the floods or any type of emergency that they've had in the past. This current year, we do not have a budget for this fund. We had two hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-four come in from prior years, from the fund. It does have a negative beginning balance due to those uh emergencies that we just experienced in the past. However, we're waiting on revenues coming back after reimbursement. But for current year, we have zero benefit. Today, I ran another report, there was an actual of one thousand eighty-nine that I'm going to investigate, because there should be zero dollars spent in this account, and something got hit. So I wanted to be transparent, we'll investigate, we'll figure out where it needs to go, and we'll journal it out, just like we were talking about with the six hundred fund. We'll have it all to our needs to go, because there should be zero dollars hidden in this account. ARPA funds, we've talked about this too, just to give uh council, you know, our council members a little bit of background, this is also corporate funds. We've already identified um projects that we have to do. Uh, the contract has to be in place by December thirty-first of twenty-four, which is another reason Ryan's going to talk to you guys tonight about the bar screen. We've already came to council, we've already had projects identified that went out for R V P, and he'll be talking about the bar screen later. But these are going to be the ARPA funds. We have one million nine hundred forty-one positive hundred fifteen as revenues rolling in. And we also have that budgeted, we do have to spend these funds, projects are approved and in progress. So um there's a timeline, everything's already been approved, and Ryan will be talking about that, so that's. One more spot. Okay, so we've talked about wellness in the past, uh they are deficit spending, and this is another area that we need to look into, because it does fall with general fund. Anytime that it is in the negative, it does fall from general fund to the fund budget. Uh, so we have uh seven hundred eight thousand nine hundred seventy-five. We've received four hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred forty-seven, which is fifty-nine point five two percent of our revenues that we've already received. And we have a budget of one point two uh four eight six hundred. And actuals have been at five hundred thirty-five thousand. So we were right on target with being where we would be on that budget at forty-two percent at the end of November. So now that we're in December, we'll be right at one fifty percent. And we need to look at ways to increase revenues or figure out how we can stop the deficit spending. This is one of the accounts that we will continue to look at.
This one was funded by memberships.
It's got various sources, it has one of the hospital um helps fund pieces of it. General fund covers through a transfer, uh we have memberships and the events that bring in the funding. But yes, it has various, but mostly through general funds. Next, we'll talk about. Uh, the California State Parks, this is one of the funding sources for uh Kaku Alco, so we have conversations about that. These are grants, uh the budget is balanced, we have eight million three hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred fifty-seven. The reason that you're seeing actual revenue is so low is because you have to spend the money to receive them. We have to submit reimbursements in order to receive those funds. Currently, we have a couple of reimbursements. One, I know is one hundred seventy-seven thousand, we just submitted another one for I believe fifty-three thousand. So we're just waiting on those funds to come in from spending the money. So uh this is another one, where you see actual uh expenditures that are zero. That six hundred fund that we talked about, we'll have journalists come over here, because like I said, we just submitted a reimbursement. Well, they were paid on that six hundred, so they need to actually be coming from a funding source that is being funded by. So next time you see actuals, you'll see journals and you'll see expenditures are. And then you won't see a six hundred, even though those six hundred will not exist. So projects are approved and in progress for this as well. Four seventy-one is park improvement. We received fifty-eight hundred dollars. Um, currently, um thirty-two fifty of that has been received, and we haven't spent any of that. So we have to pull three hundred, our three thousand two hundred fifty, the budget is balanced and not projected to deficit spend. We will now go into utility funds. We've had a lot of conversations through Prop two eighteen on these funds. Uh, we have water, sewer, and refuse. The water fund is balanced, and now that we are implementing the fees that we discussed during Prop two eighteen, we are projected to end the year with two hundred ten thousand nine hundred and three to work towards that reserve that we've been discussing. Uh, we had received six million five hundred fifty thousand five hundred thirty-three for the settlement. Those funds are in the five-five-two fund, however, they are identified with a separate department, so that we can track all the expenditures that are being uh are that are utilized in those funds. Um, and then every project that we identified to use those funds will have that specific coding, just so we can segregate regular water funds versus the settlement funds. So currently, we have only spent seven point ninety-two of our expenditure budget of eight million six hundred eighty thousand three hundred and eighty, but we've received seventy-three point seven four percent of the revenues of eight million eight hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred and eighty-three. Next will be our sewer. Our sewer fund is balanced, and with those increases that we discussed and we're projecting of one million five hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred and five, uh we are projected to have a twenty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-one dollar um surplus at the end of this year. Currently, uh there are a couple of uh rebates refunds uh that we had to refund because of overpayments from customers and um miscalculations that we discussed earlier in meeting that we owe to our customers. So that's why you'll see a actual negative one um or one thousand four hundred and seventy-four. So actually, we received zero revenues at this point because of the REBA. We also talked about the journal at the end of the year for um all of the utilities. And our expenditures currently are four hundred and two thousand one hundred sixty-seven, which is only twenty-six point one eight percent of our expenditure budget. Our expenditures are outpacing those revenues, but it's something that we'll watch closely. The next one is one that we really need to watch going forward. This is the one that Nava talked to you guys about during um the Prop two eighteen, because previously, each of the utilities had equal amount going into that street improvement fund of twenty-three point six percent from all three, water, refuse, and sewer. Well, during that feasibility study, refuse wasn't paying that pressure, however, water and sewer were paying more than that pressure. So that's what is causing this, and this is the next one besides wellness that we really need to monitor. And no matter if we weren't budgeting even anything, we'd still be in that deficit just because of the um issue of those transfers with the stream from the. So uh the refuse has increased cost for S I P. We will continue to watch it, and again, as we continue to go through the budget, it will bring us on that, or even further revisions. Next is our Mitac. This one is a reimbursement basis. So our revenues are expected to be seven seven thousand nine hundred and fifty, which also matches our rec- our expenditures. So at year end, we should break even, you don't see any revenues because we haven't built them. We always build them at the end of the year. So that's why you do not see any revenues coming in, but it's always on a reimbursement basis. Capital expenditures, this is that fund six hundred that we talked about. See the three hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-three? Those are the ones that are expenditures that should have been in those other funds. So those are going to be journaled into those other funds. Next time we come back, your actuals will say zero, 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 and this one will eventually go away, because they will be spent from the proper funding source from the beginning. So this is that six hundred that we just discussed. Fund six sixty is our two thousand fourteen bond. The revenues are nine hundred thousand seven hundred five. Expenditures are eight eighty-five forty-seven, leaving a balance of fifteen thousand one eighteen. Nothing to be alarmed about, again, this is through tax rules. Those typically will win December, April, and then like we discussed before. Home loans. These are, again, um conversations that we've had in the past. Uh, some of the council members are new. So we had home loans, the states done some audits. Currently, we no longer do the home loans. The state took them back over, however, we still collect the payment, we take a portion, we send the balance that was supposed to to the state, and initially, they will go away because the state will take them over a hundred percent. So the revenues also received uh tax rules typically late uh December, April, and June. And then as people make payments, some of the home loans, uh the person who makes the payment is not penalized. So you never roll those budgets component, because some of them don't have to make the loan until thirty years, when it's due. And there's no penalties, so they're very hard to estimate. So what we try to do is look at actuals and trends, and then we'll continue to update the budget as we receive revenues. So our first one is six sixty-two, which is a third agent. That one is thirty-seven thousand. Uh, currently for this year, we have only collected two thousand nine hundred eighty-six, which we have not completed in term, which is eight. Um, and we have not done so yet. Fund seven hundred is C D B G, which is another one. Uh, we collected about sixty-four thousand last year, so we estimated to collect about that this year. Currently, we've only collected sixteen thousand six hundred forty-one. And we've already turned over thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five uh to them, so that has been some collected and harvested. Paying it yet, but they should break even by end of. Uh, next is condo two, which is the C H F A home loans. Uh, we are expecting to collect about sixty-two hundred dollars. We've currently put fifty-eight hundred sixty-four dollars and already turned over three thousand seven hundred and seven. They're low. Those are the ones that, like I said, if they're low, it's because if you don't have to make your payment.
No.
They don't. But that's the reality of what these loans are. This one is revolving seven twenty. Same thing, we're projecting two hundred sixty thousand seven hundred and sixty about based off of last year's trend. Currently, we've brought in ninety-two thousand four hundred and seventy-six and have already turned over seventy-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-four. So that's where we are with our home loans. Uh, here's one more, Cal Home. Twenty-five thousand, we've already almost collected everything we collected last year. And we collected twenty-four thousand seven hundred sixteen of that twenty-four thousand seven hundred, sorry, seven hundred sixty-two. Uh, sixteen thousand eight hundred thirty-six has been turned over. Now we're going into the home districts. Now we're going into the home districts. The first all discussed is eight hundred eighty-three, which is our sewer revenue district. Our budget is set at twenty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven, and we are budgeting to spend fourteen thousand four hundred ninety. And twelve thousand eight hundred, six hundred eighty-seven is going to be our balance, we haven't brought in any revenues, again, um taxes and whatnot. Uh we've already spent four thousand one hundred and twelve for the heritage E D four. We're projecting to bring in six thousand nine hundred thirteen, also spending six hundred nine thirteen with a zero balance at year-end. Again, we're waiting for those funds to come in, usually come then late summer, and we've already spent one thousand eighty-four dollars on that mission. Eight eighty-six, which is our Mola district, same thing, we are projecting to spend what we bring in at four thousand six hundred and ten. There is came in, we're expecting them at the end of the summer, and the actuals at this point was seven hundred and. Eight eighty-seven, which is our street prior, we are projecting to bring in eleven thousand four hundred, and our budget is ten thousand six forty, and there's a typo right there. Um because there should be about a nine eight hundred dollar um balance there. And our actuals are two thousand nine hundred. Our Parkside District, we are projecting to bring in nine thousand thirteen, spend nine thousand thirteen, currently we've spent one thousand one hundred and twenty. Sierra Vista, that'll be our next one, we're projecting to bring in sixty-five hundred forty-seven. And our budget is set at two thousand three hundred and six. This one, the reason the budget is so low, we're trying to uh recoup because it did have a negative budget from prior year. So what we're trying to do is lower or figure out um how to make up that difference from the negative budget pulling over from prior year. Currently, they've only spent two hundred and thirty, so we're really trying to watch what we are doing with that budget. Maple Valley will be our next one, we're projecting to spend three thousand nine hundred seventy-four. Our budget is also um to receive three thousand nine hundred seventy-four revenues, our actuals at this point are four hundred and sixty-two. Pelus Ranch is our last one, we are projecting to bring in twenty-two thousand twenty-eight with expenditures of nineteen thousand eighty-two with a. Balance of two thousand nine hundred forty-six, currently, we have spent three thousand three hundred fifty-eight. And that is all I have for you tonight, if you have any questions, if not, I do recommend approving the presentation as is and the budget amendment after.
Oh I have a question, oh there was a recent. Update right uh all the home brother town and you know the folks that I know that's uh assessed. Uh for the taxes for previous years.
All considered in the budget, uh that was passed in May, that's one six from me, and those who have been accounted for. But the one that has the negative balance from forward, we're trying to really watch those costs because they haven't been accounted for in the past. Any other questions?
Um. Basically, I know that this have all the stuff happened before you think. But this is really significant, and I'm kind of disappointed. As to why we did not discuss the simple session or. A head phone call would have been appreciated, um and I'm still happy to want the checks. The way everything was calculated, because this is coming out of. Our spending buckets. Again, we have gone through this for so many years.
I agree. And I did, as I proposed the the tonight's celebrations, and I was told we had to do it in the open session.
No, this should have been a close second. I'd like to discuss it more in the first question. The that's one of the major.
Um I think that falls under audit, that does not fall under this piece.
Prove this.
Yeah, because that is our audit piece. All the errors that's happened would fall under audit, this is budget, which all of that started in Tara. So we could discuss the audit piece, but that does not affect this piece because this is to fix the errors.
Right.
So I just want to clarify, okay.
Sure, like our question, if you tried, do you want to put that on there?
Okay.
So then that that doesn't have anything to do with.
No.
What what you're talking about.
Because it's already been addressed in.
And so in a dress, but no one knew about. That's that's what really gets to me. And because I thought we were going to be very transparent, transparent with us, transparent to the people. And apparently that didn't happen in this one. And that's part of it.
I agree.
So I would rather move this to the next meeting and discuss it in a close session. Is there time to do that or? Is this time sense?
We can move this to the next meeting, it's going to be the same information. With that. Yes, yes, that's the audit. Because like I said earlier, state audit has not been published, it's in the September nineteenth of December. And I can't assess in detail until it's published.
Are they two separate?
They're two separate.
Are it like the budget, because she presented this budget.
Right.
Can we approve this budget while still having the audit information that you're talking about be separate or is it?
I don't know, so like what you're talking about is the continues of our previous conversational audit, this is a separate item. Entire.
Yeah, but all the methods are here.
Right, right, but we talked about that with our last conversation.
We talked about what?
Correcting those deficiencies and issues.
But we didn't know what the deficiencies were.
We talked about the errors, but no, it's not errors that we have to talk about and go into detail.
Right, right.
And those are the ones that are addressed well, for everything is going to address in all the budgets.
But we're just approving this so you can move forward with this.
Right, right, so this is the budget.
Mm-hmm.
But the errors are, it's what we have to do is corrective action to fix the audit.
Yes.
There is nothing that's going to change this. With the issues that we have to move forward because it's literally a calculation error. So audit is errors and issues.
Yes.
This is our budget moving forward to go in right here. There's two separate issues.
So then you get a motion to push.
We're going to need to take public comments.
Oh, yes, I know.
I think the question is whether or not the items that were deficiency, whether you remain it out, what harbor the deficiency at. I think that's the question, because it seems like you've done a good job as far as accounting for it, but not detailed enough. To feel comfortable moving on, and that's what I think, that's what we need to have. And also I can see the Friday night uh budget, the budget you do get from the uh the um. Yeah, Friday night market, I'm going to see that budget there.
So in your guys' packet, today I went over my. Today, I went over in the session of the rod, but in your package, I have got nine items where it is detailed.
Yes. So.
So more background, it's all detailed in your.
Any more questions, other comments? Um like.
You can talk over them.
Over them, please.
Well, I have a question about Gina, regarding that here. I understand that the budget that we need now is with the progression of the reconciliation from this point forward.
Right.
So. The different, the discussion from this point back. That has to be addressed, right?
Right, and that is what I asked for close session, however, tonight with the celebration and bringing on the new members, I was told we have to wait. Till we go over the audit in the next week.
So that's going to be a different conversation, correct, that's that's going to be.
No, because that's all, that's on the balance sheet there, that's not on your actual revenues and expenditures. This is purely your revenues.
But if you.
Anyway.
If. I don't even want to.
Right, yeah. So what I'm presenting tonight is current year revenues, current year expenditures with current year balance. Nothing to do with the errors or the fact, so that's why I didn't bring in fund balances tonight, I'm only talking about.
Right, right, for my opinion, if there's a correction that we need to make because of half.
That would be your fund balance.
Wait, is this budget?
It will be in your fund balance budget, this is currently the revenues.
If we owe, that's not that.
We're not going to owe.
We're not.
No. No, because it's a balance sheet side.
So this is an error of rules, this is what the auditor found. And so that's why it needs to be corrected, so they're they, you know, that's going to be a whole different issue, we're just approving.
You're approving current year revenues.
Yes.
Expenditures budget.
So unless it's an audit, if it wasn't for the audit, you wouldn't even know what's going on, you know?
Well, because I brought it up, um however, they come from it.
Yes, okay. So nothing's going to change with your budget.
For current year, no.
For current year, so nothing's going to change, this is going to be the same.
So what is presented tonight is your current year revenues, your current year expenditures, that isn't.
Okay, okay.
Fund balance and accruals is a balance sheet item, so if someone has something on the books and that's changing, your liability is just going to be.
Mm-hmm.
So it's your liability, these are current year revenues and expenditures. Does that make sense?
Give me the sound.
It would have made sense if you wouldn't have the. I agree.
Okay, so I'm with a close session.
Okay, depends on how many questions you guys have, uh we've talked about errors in the past. We went over the errors, they go into detail of every one, so it depends, do you have a question on every single error, do you want to see the calculations, do you want to see every single one? It just depends on how many questions.
And then we don't even have the audit report yet until next week.
Well, you're not going to have our external audit until April, but you're going to have a state audit to summer range, yes.
And the plan was to wait until we get that audit with the audit findings in the close session with the entire council. That update on all of the findings and our plan for corrective action.
And nothing.
It's a liability, it's not a current year revenue, current year's expenditure.
That's why I wasn't sure when a question was.
Okay. We all have some verification. Okay, let's move forward with it and. I'm hoping for. For that as well.
Bye. I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Soros, I have a from Councilmember Neve, Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Bruton Flores?
No.
Uh Mayor Villarreal?
Aye.
Motion carries for a while.
And then we have the. Is it thirteen points or another one?
Uh we should have a revised item, it's actually eleven point.
This is yeah, this is eleven point nine, yeah, okay, so eleven point nine, these are supposed to be called your initially reported hearing. Our potential designs, etc.
So just before we get started on that one, if you brought up about the bar screen, um that was actually in the concept calendar. That was just approved tonight, so I just wanted to give anyone an option if you had any questions or if I can clarify anything about the bars. Anybody have any questions on that?
Can you give us like a synopsis?
Right, so the bar screen, what it is, is our wastewater feeding plant, it's a pre-screening mechanism. So you've got wastewater that comes into the facility, the bar screen filters out the solids and then through an elevator system, it ends up moving those solid. Uh waste materials off to a different area, they're processed and taken out to a uh. Um basically a dump. Um the current system is about twenty-four, twenty-five years old and, you know, it's obviously it's an accountable item of maintenance. Uh we identified this is a project that needs to regress, we've got funding sources through U C B funds that we talked about. The community development as well as ARPA funds, um and then any overages would be through wastewater. We have to have that project mitted in contract by December thirty-first. Um on the U C B side, and I'm sorry, on the ARPA side. Um and then those expenditures have to be completed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So what you approved tonight was the authorization, we we sent this out for an R P in November. We set a uh a process for that, not receiving bids, so we scaled back the project a little bit. Requested additional quotes and uh what council authorized today is once we get those quotes in. Uh the city managers authorized to execute uh on the lowest responsible bid, so that's what was presented in in the package tonight. Uh but it's basically to filter that material, if this system were to go out, we'd have to have employees go out, scrape that bar screen three times a day. It's hazardous materials, so it's a, it's an important system, so that's basically what the bargaining. So to get into the Transit Center, um the reason we wanted to have this uh discussion item is really to. Uh this is a a project that's been in works for a while, it kind of started in twenty nineteen with new council members, we wanted to give kind of a program overview. Um and then get some input on a design element and then uh request council's uh. Uh consent to put this out for design, so. Basically, I'll run through this real quick, um this partnership for the Lindsay Transit Center started in twenty nineteen. It's a collaboration between the City of Lindsay and P C A G uh to expand transit options for Lindsay. Uh the funding for the facility is paid for by additional measure art funds and Cal S T A S P pro fifteen or S P one twenty-five transit funds. Uh the project highlights are improved access for our residents to uh integrate into a transit network for access to businesses, shopping, healthcare. Uh it's a support for low-income residents to provide accessible transit options, connect with neighboring communities. And in the future plans, there is envisioned a long-term. Local rail system that basically would, the original was to go from Forterville all the way to Huron. And it would then integrate into the California High Speed Rail system that's currently underway. Uh we looked at this with our community benefits, it provides eco-friendly travel. It's an investment in the sustainable and future-oriented local system that reduces overall traffic congestion. Increases accessibility to transit and reduces programming costs through reduced vehicles on the rail. Um as you'll see in the the concept plans, uh the desire was to transform a lighted property in the vibrant facility. Future potential use for office space, food court and a community. So this is, if you're not familiar with the project, um the city purchased the old Yoko Valley. Packing house at the corner of Hermosa and Mount Purin. And uh the site is roughly seventy thousand eight yards square. This was a concept layout that was done in twenty twenty-two. And um when you look at this, you've got on the left side of the screen, you've got building A. And when this was originally uh sent out for design services, it was envisioned as a multi-purpose building. For a food court, office space, and as kind of a meeting grounds there just to the east. There just to the east of that building A, there was an area in the back of food trucks and. Uh on the west side, there was some uh some space for outdoor eateries. Uh kind of in the center of that layout is building B, which is the actual transit hub. It's roughly a twenty-hundred square foot building to kind of um be kind of the main uh transit area. You've got a parking lot just to the west of that for vehicles and then on the far right side or the south side of the the complex. You have uh bus access and the uh uh kind of a water retention area in the center. On the far east side of the process, uh parallel to the railroad tracks, that would be for future development for rail. Uh so again, I'll run through this. The city purchased Yoko Packing House in twenty nineteen for twenty-five thousand. We completed the site demolition cleanup. As I said, the conceptual layout was done in twenty twenty-two. Um again, this was a kind of a big picture project. The city manager at the time was looking at uh that site for community development. The current status is the city has identified funding sources for the site of the overall site development and the transit center hub, which is identifying these plans as building B. Uh via measure R and CAL SGA funds. We do not currently have a funding source for the multi-purpose building that I'll show you later. Uh the projected cost for this site and the travel, the transit center hub is uh listed at eight point six one million. The multi-purpose office building is estimated to be about an additional five million dollars. So where we're coming to council today is staff is going to ask for council direction. Uh regarding a replacement for building A to that multi-purpose building uh with a potential for future development. Um our recommendation is that we kind of maintain the overall intent of that um. Of that facility is that, you know, we may have an additional funding source in the future. We may partner with a um private developer. And so we kind of keep in mind that that space could support this building in the future and we allow ourselves kind of some options there. Um so and you'll you'll kind of see a little more spot. Um and then on the overall is the council approval to release a request for qualifications for full design specifications for the higher profit site. And the transit center hub, which is building B. Again, building A would not be included in this RFQ request. So as you can see from this site layout, the building is all the way at the north end or at the top of the the screen. We're not requesting that go up through the site. You don't have the funding source for it. So what we're thinking of doing is removing that and then having the drought, you know, if we were to cave this open with concrete. That might make future development a little difficult because if they need to um put in utilities or anything like that, we'd have to then remove that concrete. Um so it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense to spend the money to to concrete over that to have removed it later. So that's where the drought resistant um landscaping is is our recommendation. You again, you've got the circular drive in the middle where there's parking, the center, and then you've got the bus depot on the kind of the bottom. Uh this is part of that um conceptual layout that was done in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. This is the architect's conceptual design for that building B. This will be the main transit center hub. Um again, they identified the building size to be approximately twenty-eight hundred fifty square feet. It would have a, you know, benches, it would have bathrooms um and things of that nature. However, it did not in any exact designs that was included in that uh conceptual layout. This was the conceptual layout for that building A that I discussed and just there are just rendering maps of what that might look like. And something that we could again look at doing in the future. Um and this was the uh conceptual layout for that building A. It included food retail on the first story, fifteen hundred or fifty-three hundred square feet. And then uh on the upstairs, it was virtual office space, it's about twenty-five square foot. So again, we'd like to just kind of, we'll open it up for public comment and then get some input from council for what you'd like to do for building A. And then uh request council approval for sending this out to RFQ. Just because we have a new council, what an RFQ is, is we're requesting um it's kind of twofold. We send out a request uh to different firms to um obtain their qualifications for even providing plans. And then the second part is those actual plans um for the site, the design of the site, and this is the move forward with this transit center project.
When is it a bit to start?
So it really just depends on, you know, getting the getting the plans, uh and the funding source is always, you know, when you have a project, the funding source is always kind of a link going. Uh we have measure R funds that have been getting near upon here that have been um obligated from prior councils for this project. We've got those CAL SGA funds. We've also had uh conversations with uh with TCAG and. This is going to roll into the overall network. Um you know, TCAG has has funds that are dedicated to transit and having a transit center in Lindsay is important. CAG and they've basically said they they would work with us on uh, you know, if any additional funds were needed, that they have funded, they wanted for transit in Plarry County. That they would be willing to commit this part of. So it really just would depend on um. On the the timeline of receiving these documents and again, we would come back to council with. With this and then depending on what council would what the direction was.
Other comments, it is right at eleven point nine. All right, we get the safer vote for this, so. Or any questions?
At first, we could just get some some input on uh. On that design element. What, is there something that council would like to see? Is there any direction that council may have or do you want to just proceed with? With the staff recommendation of the the drought resistant uh landscaping and that would really be. You know, the specifics of it would be developed through that RFQ RFQ process for the song.
I think a police department next to the transit center would be awesome. That would. Keep a lot of people from staying in Lindsay at the end of the term.
No.
Your volunteer.
Oh, yeah. I just, you know, if we could find the funding source.
I agree.
I mean.
I do, I do agree that. On the phone, but I think it's expensive, yeah, but drought tolerant. That'd be very open. We didn't install and also like you said, we moved um I think it could be an attractive property to a developer. We opened to private funding for for that site. And all the people looking at some public investment. I just, I I like seeing trees, she was great, but just concrete seems to be absolute, in my experience, Lindsay, it doesn't matter most of the time. Yeah, that's all. I I I like the content. Uh I I've I've been excited about it for a long time because public transit. For that students moving uh baby or uh people to PC to COS and sometimes that becomes difficult where I'm here. Don't argue, accomplish it for us. So this involves having more success for our residents, but I agree that um. I I I really do. Quickly, uh this has been talked about for a very, very good time, but uh we shouldn't. If we only do two-thirds, I don't know, two-thirds. Long comments, two-thirds, I think two-thirds is better than that. And so that means. For pause on that movie, try to find a movie for that and and just. If you're on that, that's that's.
I agree because we have funding there, so let's get started.
And I'm just going to say, if you still have that concept of giving like food trucks, because that's really popular, like in a lot of cities, having like food food truck competitions. Like even having like an area where we could have benches and even it's just something temporary. Um I think that's a that's a good idea, but moving forward, I think we should move forward with it.
One of the things I I I saw is EV chargers. I think moving forward is going to be very uh imperative that we incorporate that into our city development. To me, there's a lot of people stand forward or can't have it in their homes. Or EV charging, so I like that it's in there. I I'd like to make the point of emphasis so people know that it is also be a place with no charge.
It also bring people in to Lindsay, you know, and somebody there, drive your car, drive your coffee.
That Tesla place.
Yeah.
Over there at um in Traver is always full of. Yeah, this.
I have a motion that we took it out to. Um, our three.
Okay, outside here.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Neve, second from Mayor Villarreal, Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Soria.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Flores.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
And now we have uh requests for future islands. You know, you go first.
First, a few islands.
Well, now.
Well, you know what I lost.
Just need to try something. Move through with it. If if all of council would like that, we could move to it for sure.
Was it for COVID? Is that what it's not on? I have a question. First, I know that I I spoke to you about um we have that play uh coming out through March, which is wild enough. And I know that we probably don't have the funds to donate to like a project that, but I would like to put it out there where we could get the city involved so we can be like that, bring more. Thing uh plays and stuff like that for uh the city of Lindsay. Uh it's it's part of it, is it called the Gate Channel?
GTO, Gate Channel?
Yeah. March twenty-second, so just to see like, even if the cabinet put on the calendar, maybe announce from the announcement out there to the community involved to see if we can get, you know. Funds somewhere if we can't do it for a moment, but you know. One day, Lindsay will be able to really, that's the goal. One day, three years, let's bring it. Seriously, that's the goal, like, you know, get out of that deficit and help for bringing more communities if we need it, that's the goal. Um, you know, like, anything else, anybody else for treasures? No, I think we're good.
Totally. One thing real quick, if we had kind of discussed this a couple of months ago with the perks of the areas. Damon, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we just need council consensus or a general. So if you guys want to address that tonight. Um I think we could have it removed by the next meeting. You guys want to give us some direction as to that, if there's a consensus for move the barricades or or the the COVID delineators or not? Well, it's it's not something that I think requires any kind of formal action. It's just you guys, you a majority of you want it removed and then. So you can just give us some direct.
Yeah, is it free?
It's just a monthly services company.
It's about thirty, it's about thirty minutes of this span.
And you were down.
So we will, you will get the move, we will find out getting those things by the next council.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Like, and it's kind of funky.
I have one thing real quick, sorry. Uh we are obviously doing a free virtual training on the January twenty-fourth. And it's going to include um sexual harassment, eighty-one, two, three, four, which is going to be required. And then um Brown Act and Public Corrective Act. So it's free. Personal.
Sorry, I was excited about that.
Yeah, and um so that we're going to be sending out a flyer soon um for you guys to like register if you guys want to come. It's open staff as well, that'd be that training. Um but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that page. Um it's going to be from nine to four thirty, I believe. Because well, because sexual sexual her uh every two years. Sexual harassment and eighty-one, two, three, four are both required to our training and that's why that that's why it's so long, but you don't have to be there the whole time. Um it'll have the times that each different trainings on, so at least one of us, you can just hop in on that one. You don't have to be there all day.
I do believe all of council will need the Brown Act and eighty-one, two, three, four though.
Okay.
We all have this. I think it's due. I'll double check for for you two, but at least at least. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's about to expire for you guys if it hasn't, but definitely the the new three for sure.
I have a question, I'm a bit sorry before, do you send my calendar invites for all of the events that are going on?
I I don't. Armando will send a lot of them, recreation.
Okay.
Uh I I calendar stuff for like the meetings that you need to attend if you ask me to, for sure.
Okay.
But like, community stuff, it just depends if we get notified of it or not, but we can attend too as long as we know about it.
Oh, okay.
Armando's really good. But what you can do too is if you see it, just text me real fast and I'll make sure.
Okay, so is the meeting adjourned?
Just real quick, I know we talked about it.
Yes, I did find that on the League of California Cities. Um I believe there's still open registration available. I just hadn't done anything until you were officially on council. So I can send you an email of information now. Yes.
I got the email, so.
Yeah, the same week.
Okay. I I think there's two different options, one in northern, one in southern California for new council members. I'll send you the info board.
All right, so the meeting is adjourned. And we went to.
Good job. Well, that's my. My wife told me that it was.